thirty-two, so we'll call a meeting to order. And in charge of roll call, Tim, I can show the council is all here with exception of Dave, who I hope five minutes currently. Pat is here.
Can we turn off microphones, please?
We're getting a lot of rattling noise.
Can I just have a test to see if you can hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, good. Apparently, I'm having problems with my headset, so I wiped my computer. I see everybody present, but Dave harms, as you noted.
Correct. And are you recording currently?
We are.
Okay.
Recording.
Okay, so that's it for the roll call. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Very none, let's move on to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the April thirteen, considering council meeting minutes and city accounting slash payroll report. Any comments, questions, or motions for that? Come on, somebody.
I moved to adopt.
Consent agenda is shown.
Second.
Thanks, Scott. And who gave me the second?
Both me and Scott.
I was gonna say, that was John Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? If not, please vote using your yes or no buttons. Okay, we have four yeses. Four confirmed, thank you. Guest presentations. Is it captain or undersheriff, Michelle, at this hour? Michelle, where are you?
Oh, there I am, I had to unmute myself. It is not undersheriff yet, but it will be September first.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Michelle, congratulations.
Thank you, I'm excited.
Very highly deserved.
What's that?
Very highly deserved.
Oh, I appreciate it, Jim.
Appreciate you for a long, long time. Okay, so do you have a report for us?
I do, I do. I was thinking to myself that I, you know, it's very convenient to do it this way. I kinda miss, you know, hanging out with everybody, too.
Welcome to this, you know, it's only a five-minute drive for you to come over and, you know, be here.
Well, I gotta do what Sergeant Miller told me to, and she said to do it. If I can stop by next time, I'll stop by.
We'll get there.
Uh, let's see, all right. So for April twenty-one, we had seven citations, five warnings. Three traffic crashes were reported. And five adults were arrested with one hundred and forty-four. Total incident investigated in one hundred and two hours. Um, one thing I know, at least last time I was with you guys, you guys asked me about the murder shooting thing that you guys had. I think about two months ago now in Millersburg. If you hadn't seen, we did make an arrest on that. Seventeen-year-old kid was arrested for that incident. We're still doing some further investigations. But he has been arrested. Um, and a couple of things that I noted, we had a few thefts, some from vehicles, as it seems like we always have those sprinkled in here. There was, it seems like the most that we had were like parked at businesses. One was tires. And they had some vario and toolset taken out of there. There were a lot of alarms this month, for some reason. I don't know, I tried to look if it was one particular place, but it seemed to be multiple businesses, for whatever reason, had false alarms. Did have also a lot of extra patrols in some of those areas where we had thefts of, you know, in either the parking lot or at the business themselves. That was good. Our animal control guys came out a couple times. Tried to look specifically for some people, I think it was specific people that had dogs off leash. Um, one of the other things that I found is we had some higher speeds than usual for Millersburg that we cited a couple of people for. One was a sixty-four and a forty mile an hour zone on Old Salem, and then the other one was, I think it was like a seventy and a fifty, also on Old Salem. So people are definitely picking up their speeds up there. There was, let's see, what else did I note here? We had just a hole that was cut in a fence at one of the local businesses, didn't appear anything was missing. And I think that was one of the businesses that they did go back a couple times and do some extra patrols. The other is, we had a couple of fraud thefts that, you know, it just seems we have more and more of these every, every month, you know, just throughout the county. One was some rental equipment that wasn't returned. And the other one was later in the month, somebody, and I don't know why people keep doing this, but they were conned into sending a bunch of gift cards as payment for whatever service they thought they were getting. We actually had one of our own deputies, even though he should well known his father, because they really do target the elderly, and his father was convinced that, I think it was Amazon hadn't, he hadn't paid an Amazon bill. And so they were saying, they basically convinced him that the, his actual bank account wasn't working, so they were able to get him to allow them to remote into his computer. And then said it still wasn't working and had him go to multiple places, because even Target, then when he went to Target at first, told him, you know, look, we're not gonna sell you over, I don't know, a hundred or two hundred dollars in gift cards because of all these frauds, and don't pay anything on frauds. And they even had a big sign posted right where you buy gift cards. And people still do this. I can tell you, there is no, and I know I've said this before, but tell everybody you can think of, there is absolutely no legitimate business or entity that is gonna ask you for a payment in a gift card. So if, that is an immediate tell that that is a scam. There, there was another accident. It was two vehicles. I couldn't, my computer wasn't working well today for some reason, and I couldn't figure out what was the cause of the accident. But it was there at Love's, so I imagine somebody pulled out in front of somebody. And it would, the site, or the driver was cited for careless driving. One of the other crashes that was reported as a crash actually happened into, in the parking lot at Love's, and that's technically for us, for our purposes, not considered a crash, but the deputy just didn't change the call type. And, let's see, we had a couple floodlights that were also stolen from Love's. And some other merchandise. Love's in itself has kept us a little bit busier than we would be without it. I would say probably on an average, it's five to ten calls that are actual calls for service a month. One thing, when you see that we have one hundred and forty-four incidences or those in that. So every extra patrol, every, you know, all those you see that are nine-one-one hangups that we just get frequently, those are just because that computer system, you know, counts that. So that's all, one hundred and forty-four is all those things combined. So the actual calls for service that are actual crimes, you know, is typically always much, much lower. But Love's has been a good majority, or I would say probably a third to a half of those recently, so just keep that in mind. One other thing, and I know just in the past, Jim in particular, you've asked me to keep an eye on crashes and where they're happening and what's going on with them. And I don't know for sure that this is like an official study, but I know we've had several at the intersection of Old Salem and Conser there. And just in my own personal driving, I've noticed there are a lot of people that use the driveway that comes out onto Old Salem. And so when you're trying to pull out to turn right, you're coming right into their path, and sometimes there's been a couple, even myself, I've had a couple of calls where, okay, yeah, somebody's turning right in as you're pulling out from the stop sign after, you know, they don't have a blinker on or whatever else. So, or if somebody's pulling out from that driveway as well, you know, so it's just kinda hard. It's a very difficult intersection, because you have that, that T-intersection and that driveway so close in approximation and that, that market's so busy. So just keep that in mind, it's, I don't know what necessarily needs to be done about it, but just something to think about. But that's kind of, I think, all I got, really. That's good, easy for me.
Michelle, your comments pertaining to Love's that you just provided, was that the response, was that a response to my question to Beth last month?
I don't think in particular what you asked Beth last month, but I just have known that it has been a concern in the past, when, when either you and I have talked or in council meetings.
Yeah, I really don't wanna overplay this, but I wanna be cautious about the amount of time and dollars spent supporting Love's. I don't mean that in a negative way necessarily, but I, the six, first six months of Love's, I actually personally monitored calls, I thought it was pretty minor. Now I'm seeing it picking up significantly from what I'm remembering in the past. So maybe that's normal, maybe that's okay, but when you mentioned this, not agree, five to ten calls a month from Love's, I thought it was higher than that a bit.
It may be, and that's just a guess. The, the other thing that I noticed, too, and this is kind of a byproduct of having, you know, any truck stop or something that has heavy activity that's coming and going from I-5, is that it appears to me that we're having a higher population of people either just wandering in the area, for whatever reason, and, you know, I think Love's sometimes is that attractive to get people to pull off in this location, or they've gotten a ride here and it's a good place for somebody to drop them off if they're hitchhiking or whatever else. But we've had several mental calls on the roadway. We've had, there was one person that was in the, just parked in a neighborhood, but they were, you know, they're from Portland and don't have any business in Lynn County or in Millersburg in particular, that there's no reason for them to be parked in one of those neighborhoods.
But at the risk of getting way ahead of myself here, and we'll be cautious with this, but here I'm making a public comment. My concern is, if we're getting to a point where the calls for service, the cost of calls for service to the city are significant enough that it's, they're becoming a cost burden to the city, I would want city staff to talk with Love's staff about how to reconcile that. There's ways you can do it. I don't know if we're there yet, that's why I like to, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get overzealous here, but it just, in the back of my mind, I, if we get there, I wanna deal with it. That's where my head is.
Sure, sure. No, I know that that has always been a feeling of the council, and so that's why I just presented. I don't, it's nothing that is beyond what the hours are, you guys are paying for now. I just wanted to bring your attention to it, so.
Hey, is there any way, is there any way we could put a line item of how many calls and is at Love's, like the traffic citations? Could we add that to our thing, just so we can kinda monitor it for four or five months?
It's difficult for us to just write a script. I mean, we can do it, but to just do it for a temporary basis, it actually takes a lot of manpower to kind of do those computer magic guru things. What I can tell you is if it says here sixty-four-hundred Old Salem Road, then it's a Love's call.
Okay, I can do the math.
Yeah.
But, but Michelle, you can type that address in and get all the calls against her, right? Over a period of time?
No, we can't, we can do that, and I can just periodically send that to you guys, but like I was talking about, is I think it's, in my opinion, just, and again, this is not like hard statistic facts, but I have also noticed that there is just an uptick in, and part of that's just society anyway, that there's more prevalent presence of transient activity. And, but Love's is a perfect place for some of that to happen or to come or go from, so.
Right.
Example, somebody dropped off at Love's and then walked the rest of the way into Albany, and then, you know, we had one call in here where the lady's like bleeding and won't tell us anything of what's going on, and we don't know what happened with her, you know, just like that.
So Mayor, can I share a couple things?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I took a look here in the last week. I went back and looked at the Love's calls for the last six months, and one of the things, just to be aware of, the sixty-four-hundred address shows up quite a bit for stuff that's also not necessarily related to Love's. They're the food court, there, I found a number of, reading the narrative of a number of them at sixty-four-hundred are the food court, so I didn't count those. So they're averaging eight to ten, it's probably over that. Some are pretty minor calls, that includes, you know, someone calling that lost their wallet. So I'm sure that's just a phone report, you know, I don't think the deputy was going out. So I don't know, Michelle, what you think they are averaging on those calls, an hour, maybe?
Again, if that, and I, and I'm not saying that it's something that, you know, is all of a sudden this, you know, serious problem that we have, I just know that it has been brought up at several council meetings, and so I just wanted to bring a little bit of attention to it, to keep an eye on it.
So Love's, Love's right now is valued at four-point-five-eight million dollars. So we're receiving in taxes from them a year, a little over sixteen thousand dollars a year, based on our current hourly rate with the sheriff at seventy-five fifty-one. And that's a hundred and thirteen, let me do it again here. It's about seventeen hours, just under eighteen hours a month, if you wanted to look at it that way, that they're paying towards the sheriff's contract. If you wanted to say that they're coming in, we're using, you know, that that's being used towards the sheriff's office, kind of the way that take it, if you wanted to take a look at it that way, what they're paying right now is covering about eighteen hours of our contract with the sheriff's office a month.
So that's the total of their total tax, however, which doesn't cover, that doesn't room, free room for fire or anything else. We, we beat this to death. I'm not suggesting we go do anything, I just wanna get a flavor for it. Kevin, Kevin, thank you for doing that, that's really kind of what I wanted to hear, what you just said. And I would invite others, if they have concerns, talk about it down the road. So what it sounds like is, you probably don't need to do anything right now this minute.
No, I don't think so.
Thanks, Janet.
And there, I also noticed the number of calls, of some of them, a lot of times the sixty-four-hundred gets listed for where someone gets pulled over for a traffic violation or speeding. I don't know that it's necessarily related to Love's. I mean, maybe, it may be people pulling in or out of, but I think, I don't think the speeding would be them pulling out of there. But I think it's a fairly common address right in that vicinity that they're aware of, so I think a lot of times sixty-four-hundred gets entered into the reports probably.
We see sixty-two-hundred also, which I thought we'll see here in other places, but, okay. Anything else, Michelle?
Nope, not for me.
Comments or questions from council? I didn't mean to hog it all. Thank you so much.
All right. Take care.
Thank you. Kevin, you want to introduce our next presenter?
Sure. So our next individual is Division Chief Will Bowsher. He is with Corvallis Fire. I was been with him, probably, I don't know, I'll let Will share that, been quite a while, he was there when I was still with Albany. So Will chaired the ASA Subcommittee Reviewing the Boundary Request that we did, and he offered to come and share what they're looking to propose forwarding to the county commissioners, and I thought you might enjoy hearing from someone other than myself or Scott, so. So, Chief Bowsher, if, if you wanna take it, that'd be great.
Turn your sound off, please.
You're muted still. There you go.
Okay, so Mayor, Council, Will Bowsher, as Kevin mentioned, my full-time job is with City of Corvallis Fire, I've been with them fifteen years. Prior to that, I worked for the city of Salem. I have a fair amount of experience dealing with ASA issues, ironically enough. As Kevin mentioned, I thought he'd just come and share a little bit about our process that we recently completed in relation, related to the request for boundary adjustment forwarded to the Lynn County Commissioners. As you all know, this was formally requested of the commissioners back in January. As part of the process, it gets referred to the Lynn County Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee. And what the committee did in its January meeting is we formulated a small subcommittee to basically focus on compliance with regards to Lynn County Code, Chapter five fifty, as well as ORS six, six eighty-two, which has some specific criteria in it, dealing with ASA changes and/or boundary adjustments. And so what we did is we developed a series of questions for the principal parties, in this case, the city of Millersburg, City of Albany, and Jefferson Fire District. We then held a meeting on April fifteenth. We structured the meeting around, kinda in the, in the context of a public hearing, because this issue obviously is longstanding, and also somewhat of a hot topic with a number of individuals. So we focused around that. We gave all the principals, again, an opportunity to speak to their responses, which was very helpful. And then we gave everyone who was present an opportunity to speak to the issue, including a number of community members from Millersburg, as well as other stakeholders and providers in Lynn County. Following that, we, again, had a deliberatory meeting on May fifth. But I wanna just kinda mention here, between the fifteenth, April fifteenth to May fifth, we actually received some correspondence from Jefferson Fire District, in essence withdrawing their objection for the boundary adjustment, with the caveat that either there was some opportunity to recover potential lost revenue from the ASA and/or delay the actual implementation till the end of the upcoming fiscal year, because in predominantly, the rationale was their budget was adopted much like your, yours and the city and ours in Corvallis and et cetera. The nice thing is, we had some correspondence with Mr. Kreitman, and I would say that our meeting on the May fifth ended up being more of a mediation session, where we had that not only the committee discuss the concept, but again, all the principal stakeholders, and I'm pleased to say that everyone really, we had good consensus and everyone agreed with the following three points, that we're in the process now of formulating into the written response to the commissioners. The one being that the boundary adjustment occur, occurred July one, twenty-twenty-two. Again, that's predominantly to allow Jefferson to address any budgetary modifications that they may need to make in that, in that budget year, or in that, start of that budget cycle. The other aspect that is included, which really addressed the concerns of you all there in Millersburg regarding the level of care or kind of the stability of staffing, was we've asked Jefferson to advise Lynn County Dispatch any time that they drop to a basic life support staffing. And we were able to immediately come with a solution with the dispatch center to make a minor CAD modification, which will allow dispatch to immediately then dispatch an advanced life support ambulance in its, in Jefferson's place when they're in that status. So it gets, it kinda reduces the, any potential delays between the two Kong Centers, Lynn County Dispatch, as well as the dispatch center service serving Jefferson up in Marion County. And then finally, to maintain some accountability, is the committee has agreed that we will be reviewing all the BLS notifications on a quarterly basis during our regularly scheduled meetings. And then if failure to notify Lynn County Dispatch of the, of a BLS status, the committee will work on an adjudication process, and if that's substantiated more than three times, then Jefferson will likely be receiving a ninety-day notice of transfer of the boundary modification. So it's kind of a quick synopsis of several months. I do wanna say that, you know, I really appreciate Mr. Kreitman's efforts here, as well as the fellow members of the committee, and as well as Albany and Jefferson as well, to kinda come, bring this together and kinda come up with a final, at least timeline. I recognize it may be a little longer than what folks would like, but I believe we at least have a plan and can execute the plan and have basically a, a date in which things, action is taken. So with that, all this, I'll conclude and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Council, have any questions? Okay, Kevin, we have this on the agenda, new business approval, correct?
There's not gonna be any need for a council to take action on this, so this'll go to the Board of Commissioners, and Commissioners will actually take the action.
Thank you. Will, thank you so much. Appreciate all your help. I was actually at the meeting and watched you guys work, it was very, very, very helpful. Thanks for your support.
You're welcome, thank you so.
Thanks for being there. Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to, for public comment. And I think I see one phone entry on our list of participants without a name, am I correct, you know?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so whoever you might be on the phone, you're welcome to speak to us at this time. You are unmuted, I believe. If you'd like to do so. If not, we will then move on to public hearing. And since we have one public, we still, we need to do it anyway. Excuse me, I had some noise behind me, I didn't know what it was. This is the public hearing for the proposed changes to the city charter, the hearing that is going to be now open. We've outlined a number of changes to the charter. With public hearings, first public hearing on April first, I'm, wait there. Gonna hit it, but so I got this form that Jake, you know, gave me a month ago, and this should work for me, give my eyes square away here. Public hearings were always the changes on April fifth, twelfth, and nineteenth. When was the, made the public hearing, first one? Last meeting?
That was April thirteenth, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm confusing myself with the date I have recorded, I mean, this is the second of the two required public hearings, first of being on May, April thirteenth, today being the second. The process is we post notices in two public places of the current section and other proposed language change, published in newspaper, and then two public hearings. So this will now be open for public testimony, from anybody who'd like to speak. I am not gonna propose we read these. I guess, however, if the person of the, in the public would like to have them, maybe we will do that. So with that in mind, is there any public comment? Sorry for the confusion. Hey, hearing none, is there any council discussion by chance? Okay, those, I'm gonna close the hearing. We're closed. We will vote on those changes coming up under old business, our finished business. Moving on to council member and staff comments. Any comments from anybody?
I
You're garbled, Scott. No. You wanna call in? Okay. Any further comment? Am I, am I accurate? Nobody can hear Scott, right?
We can hear him, he was garbled, we can make it out. Have him try again, Mayor.
Try it again, Scott.
Okay, I'm here, can you hear me? Hello?
We can understand you.
All I was gonna say was, I saw some equipment in the field, or side station fifteen going, so it was exciting to see that equipment.
Yes, well, we'll actually be talking about that under the project update in just a minute.
Mayor mute himself.
So, Kim put a notice out this afternoon as well about the starting of construction. Thanks, Scott. Any, any other council or staff comments? Very none, city manager report?
Project update is Janelle mentioned, so I will let her talk about the power station and share some photos that we took. Project update is Janelle mentioned, so I will let her talk about the fire station and share some photos that we took and and our C C update.
All right, so yeah, as everyone's noticed, they've mobilized to the site. They started putting up the silt fencing, construction fencing today. They'll finish that up tomorrow and the beginning of earthwork and preparation for the building pad and the roadways, roadways. So during this initial period, they are utilizing the city owned house as their job site office. They are intending to bring a separate office in later once they get a little farther along in the earthwork and some quick pictures from today. If you didn't drive by and see what they're doing. Hopefully, we'll we'll share pictures, you know, regularly for updates. Although for most people, they can see it just driving right by. Are there any questions on the fire station? So on the park system development charter, quick update on the schedule. We're going to publish the notice that we're that we're doing this. It's a ninety day notice period requirement tomorrow. And then we have a work session scheduled for May fifteenth. Go over the park's F C C with council and make sure everyone's in agreement with. Let Deb explain to everyone how we get here and where we're at. And then if you're ready to move forward, we do have to publish that the methodology report by June eleventh in order to make it to August. Wanted to make sure you had all those dates in front of you. That's it for projects that we put slides together for, I guess, or basically have the dance chart as usual.
That's all you got, Janelle?
That's all I got right now.
Okay.
Big project. I will say, I will say that there is a lot of activity taking place that we are doing a lot of work on. The one project that is looking at leasing, I think we are close to finalizing a potential lease agreement with them. A lot of interests in our site. Including from a company that has come back. We were we made their initial, but was second chair and they are back and we may hear something from them later in the week. So could be a significant development, so we'll wait and see what happens.
And I do have, I guess I can give you a quick update. It's not a not a city project, but the the subdivision on Alexander, Berlin finest state, which is now Ferris Meadows is really, really close to being finalized, probably this week, maybe early next week, if not this week. And then the next one off the woods is getting ready to kick off, but the subdivision projects going on.
And some of you may be aware that Pacific Power went through land use hearing last month, earlier, last month, seems like it was yesterday. Couple of weeks ago, they have planning commission put some conditions on it for landscaping. They had some concerns with that because on the exterior, the perimeter of it, they have a grounding grid that cannot have stuff planted in it because of the dangers of with the ground. We actually met with their project engineer and attorney on the site today, walked through what are some options. I think we'll have it resolved. They want to do it. It's just that they have to look at what they can and can't do and without impacting having stuff getting into their the power lines and affecting their grid. So they want to do, want to meet as much as they they can. So we should be seeing something back from them in the next week.
You want to?
I think that's it.
Thank you. Kim, for the record, Dave Parnes will not be joining us. He's in, not in possession. We can do that via phone or video, so he's tied up. So we'll count him as absent tonight. Forrest, do you have a request?
Yes, I can.
Do you have anything to report?
No, not in, not under this subject.
Okay, thank you.
I like that. Yeah, I like that. I like that, Kevin.
Are you gonna hike down into Bryce?
We are. We're going, yeah, leaving tomorrow morning for Bryce and then to Zion. But yeah, Bryce heading out tomorrow morning to there. Hopefully back home Sunday evening.
So this is, this is Bryce. So just be aware, there's lots of crevices you could be hidden in.
There are.
Or go or go hide in.
That's right. Yeah, I don't know where Shelley may push me off.
Forrest, you gonna ride a horse down in there? We did that.
No, we're no, we're walking down in it.
I'd rather ride a horse.
Yes, probably be easier.
Okay, so let's move on into unfinished business. Stack, we have six ordinance sections for approval. We want six different motions, do them all in one.
Well, Forrest said earlier that they needed to be done individually, recognizing that he needs to read each one. But I'm wondering, Forrest, if we do the first one that so you don't have to read them.
Well, so Kevin, I thought about that. Unfortunately, though, ordinances do not become effective for thirty days.
True for thirty days, yeah.
And and I even thought, well, is this an emergency position? I thought, I can't justify that. But I figured a way that we can, we can shorten it. So do you want me just to to start these? So so, Mr. Mayor, what I would propose is we'll take each one. You'll see the first one, one eighty three dash two one. And then if somebody moves to approve ordinance one eighty three dash two one, and then there's a second, then what I will do is I will read that. And I won't read it until after it gets motioned and approved for with a second. And then I'll just, the first, the first section I'll just read once and the only remaining on each individual one, I will just read where it says, for example, here it says section twelve. I'll just read that one individually because first parts of each of them are all the same.
Sounds good. Good plan. So then let's start off with ordinance one eighty three dash twenty one.
Does anybody?
I know, so. As count, I'll move that we accept ordinance number one eighty three dash twenty one.
Second.
I have, I think I served Scott McPhee first, so I have motion from Scott, the second from Scott and Scott, Karen, we can hear you now.
So okay, so I'll go ahead and read that in earnest in a minute. Section twelve of the Millersburg City Charter. Whereas section thirty five of the Millersburg City Charter provides that the city charter may be amended by ordinance without an election bond giving notice posted in two public places and by publishing the notice in the newspaper of general circulation for three consecutive weeks and providing two public hearings thereon prior to passage. And whereas the city has given notice regarding the proposed amendment to section twelve of the Millersburg City Charter has posted a notice in two public places places and published the notice in a newspaper of general circulation for three consecutive weeks and has provided two public hearings thereon prior to passage. And whereas the city council, having considered all information regarding the amendment, now therefore, the people of the city of Millersburg to ordine that section, to ordain that section twelve of the Millersburg City Charter shall read as follows. Section twelve, other officers and employees, the city council shall appoint and hire a city manager who shall serve at the pleasure of the council. The wages of the city manager shall be determined by the council in a written agreement with said person. The city manager shall hire all city officers and all employees or may delegate the hiring of other city officers and or employees and may enter into agreements with other government agencies for sharing services of such officers and or employees. The city manager shall hire and retain all non city professional services providers. The city manager with the consent of the city council shall hire and retain the professional services of the city attorney. The city manager may be removed from office by a majority vote of the council. The city council may by ordinance determine that the counselor be paid a wage for services, provide provided insurance for services and that expenses paid by counselor or on behalf of the city be reimbursed and passed by the council this eleventh day of May, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Forrest.
Certainly.
Any comments from council versus regarding the motion? There are none, please go ahead and vote. Motion, thank, thank you. Okay, so let's move on now to ordinance one eighty four twenty one. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance one eighty four dash twenty one.
Motion from John, second from Scott McPhee.
Okay, thank you. The only difference in this, and I'm not going to read the the preamble, except in the second paragraph of the preamble, it says, whereas the city has given notice regarding the proposed amendment section twenty. I'll now go into the meat of it. Now therefore, the people of the city of Millersburg do ordain that section twenty of the Millersburg City Charter shall be read, shall read as follows. Section twenty proceedings to be public dash exceptions. All city or all council meetings shall be conducted in accordance with Oregon Public Records and Meetings Laws passed by the council this eleventh day of May, twenty twenty one.
Thanks, Forrest. Questions or comments? If not, please vote. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance one eighty five dash twenty one.
Move to accept ordinance number one eighty five dash twenty one.
Okay.
Okay, motion to Scott, second from the other Scott.
Here in the preamble of this, the second paragraph, the only change is whereas the city has given notice regarding the proposed amendment to section twenty three of the Millersburg. The the meat of it is now therefore, the people of the city of Millersburg do ordain that section twenty three of the Millersburg City Charter shall be read as follows. Section twenty three, mayor duties. The council shall appoint the committees provided by the council. The mayor shall sign all records of proceedings approved by the council. The mayor shall have no veto power and shall and shall sign all ordinance passed by the council within three days after their passage. After the council approves the bond of the city officer or a bond for a license contract, the proposal, the mayor shall endorse the bond passed by the council this eleventh day of May, twenty twenty one.
Russell? Please go ahead and vote then. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. So that was one eighty five, moving out of one eighty six twenty one.
Move to accept ordinance one eighty six dash twenty one.
Second.
Okay, then in the preamble, second paragraph, first sentence, whereas the city has given notice regarding the proposed amendment to section twenty four of the Millersburg City Charter. Now the main body of it, now therefore, the people of the city of Millersburg do ordain that section twenty four of the Millersburg City Charter shall be read as follows. Section twenty four, court dash law enforcement. The Lynn County Justice Court shall be the jurisdiction for prosecution of violations of the Millersburg Municipal Code and or city ordinances. The city attorney shall represent the city in prosecution of any offenses prosecuted within Lynn County Justice Court or on appeal to the Lynn County Circuit Court. Passed by the council this eleventh day of May, twenty twenty one.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Please vote. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to one, ordinance one eighty seven dash twenty one.
Most moved to accept ordinance number one eighty seven dash twenty one.
Okay.
Motion from Scott, second from the other Scott. You're like Forrest.
Okay, thank you. And council members, you'll recall that I think it's last meeting, at last hearing, Ron Post appeared and asked that little amendment be added into section thirty one here. And so that amendment is included in here. And so that's what you folks will be voting on and that's in the first section there. But here, the preamble is talks about section thirty one, the main body of it. Now therefore, the people of the city of Millsburg do ordain that section thirty one of the Millersburg City Charter shall be read as follows. Section thirty one, mode of enactment. A proposed ordinance may be, a proposed ordinance may be read in title only if no counselor present or member of the public present at the meeting shall request that the ordinance be I'm sorry, let me start that over. I proposed ordinance may be read in title only if no counselor present or member of the public present at the meeting requests that the ordinance be read in full. An ordinance shall be passed by a majority vote of the council. An ordinance shall become effective thirty days following passage of the council unless there's a provision included in said ordinance. And the council so determines that an emergency exists. And then the ordinance shall become effective upon passage by the council and signature of the mayor. An ordinance may be, may provide a later time for taking effect, passed by the council this eleventh day of May, twenty twenty one.
Let's go ahead and vote then.
You probably should have read that one first.
Well, Kevin, the problem is it doesn't become effective for thirty days.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, moving on to the last one, ordinance one eighty eight point or dash twenty one.
Move to accept ordinance number one eighty eight dash twenty one.
Motion from Scott. Give John the second this time.
Okay, and I'll read, I'll read this one, the preamble as well, because this deals with the entirety of the Millersburg City Charter. Whereas section thirty five of the Millersburg City Charter provides the city charter may be amended by ordinance without an election upon giving notice posted in two public places and by publishing the notice of in a newspaper of general circulation for three consecutive weeks and providing two public hearings thereon to passage. And whereas the city has given notice regarding the proposed amendment to the entirety of the Millersburg City Charter has posted the notice in two public places and published a notice in the newspaper of general circulation for three consecutive weeks and has provided two public hearings thereon prior to passage. And whereas the city council, having considered all information regarding the amendment, now therefore, the people of the city of Millersburg do ordain that the entirety of the Millersburg City Charter shall be amended as follows. Councilman shall be changed to councilor, passed by the council this eleventh day of May, twenty twenty one.
I'm reading such a short sentence.
Yes, it is.
Okay, any other comments on this? Let's go ahead and vote, please. Motion, motion carried. Thank you. I apologize for my being messed up during the public hearing kickoff. I thought I had the house to myself and probably walked in with a grandson. I wasn't expecting that. You all up track of my mind, my thought process. Okay, then going to new business, cover an ADS contract. You said we don't need to do, address that?
No, we we do need to address. So the next four items Janelle will cover there. Primarily normal updates that we do every year, but there are a couple of minor in the ADS and one in the Jacobs that are some additional for some, some of what we've talked about previously, but Janelle will go over that with you.
I was thinking of the Ambulance Service, I'm sorry.
Right, you know. So the ADS flow monitoring contract amendment, so we have a current contract with ADS who monitors our wastewater discharges at certain points in the system. When we change our sewer billing structure, we now need to be able to track API discharge to our wastewater system on a monthly basis for billing purposes. We tracked it in the, we have a monitor on it and it's tracked quarterly right now, but we don't, we just keep an eye on that information. We don't use it for anything at this time. So this contract amendment is to modify our contracts with ADS to change it to a monthly monitoring service. Equipment doesn't change. There's really nothing about changes except for the way they process the data and then report it to us. So for the remainder of this biannual period, which our contract is two years at a time, increases fifteen hundred ninety nine dollars to make this change. It actually already made the change for us that we need it for this next bill. For the for the first bill that we'll be sending out under the new billing structure. And this charge will be passed along to the customer because it's specifically for their service. So we're just asking that you would approve this amendment and there's a motion there suggested if you are compliant.
Question first, Janelle, so changing from quarterly to monthly. I recall this contract also requires them to maintain the flow meter, is that correct?
Yes, and it doesn't, this doesn't change anything about that. It's just how often they report the data on this particular flow monitor.
Questions from council or motion?
I move for approval of the authorization for the city manager to sign amendment fourteen to the agreement for technical services with ADS Environmental Services.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion from John, second from Scott Callan. Any questions or concerns? Not, please go ahead and vote. And a few motion carried. David Iverson Associates.
I'll just add on that ADS monitoring contract. When we bring back a next amendment for extending for an additional two years, this will be built into it at that point.
Janelle, I'm going to ask you a question that I've been debating on and asking for the last week. You're, this was a contract I got involved with between city managers. It's they, we had not paid them and they quit months. they, we had not paid them and they quit months, they didn't, like quitting reading the meters and Albany starts knocking on our door, so I got into it and I developed another amendment, and the guy, media, whoever it is, said, why do you keep amending this thing, when are we going to sit down and talk about the contract? Is this what you now have done, is, are we, have evaluated the entire contract and we're satisfied that it is where it needs to be long term?
Well, I mean, every time we've done an amendment, we've looked at it and made sure that this is what we want to continue doing, we had considered, you know, some cities purchased their own flow monitoring equipment and managed it themselves, and I have a vendor who actually calls me regularly wanting to sell us their equipment, but, but the challenge is we don't have the staff to do that, if we were Albany, sure, we, that's how they do it, but I think this is a better setup for us, honestly, so we've just continued on, their equipment's already there, it's doing fine, we're not having any issues with it, and.
I, I am, I am in no way suggesting we not have a contract with them, it's just that that conversation stuck with me, it was a little bit irritated that all we did was just continue to revise for now 13 to 14 times.
Sorry.
I, I know you got it under control, I'm sorry, but I shouldn't even butt those up probably.
They're welcome to propose changes, we're happy with it, so, but they're welcome, they want to propose changes, they can propose the changes.
Yeah, I, this is why I didn't call you, I kind of convinced myself it wasn't worth talking about, and here it is, I went and talked about it anyway.
That's okay. No problem.
So move on.
There may have been other questions.
Okay, we wanted to.
I would just, I would just mention, this is more than just monitoring, so.
Oh yeah, it's maintenance as well.
They have to do, they have to enter confined spaces to do its, do stuff, so, and that's why this isn't feasible for us to look at doing it, all the stuff that we'd have to have in place to be able to, to work on it if there's issues and things, so.
Definitely not advocating for that.
Their, their staff haven't brought that up with me when we've gone through the last few amendments, that they have any reason to change that. Okay. So if you're ready, I can talk about the David Evans contract amendment.
Please.
So, as I know you're already aware, David Evans and Associates provides construction inspection and owner's rep services for us through a contract we currently have for professional services, so the construction inspection is for our typically subdivisions when they're going in, any, any private developer who's putting in public infrastructure that we need to inspect, and then the owner's rep is for the fire station project, and that was something we've talked about for quite a while, the individual who provides this service for us, Jeff Lippard, was a former city of Albany staff, and he was the owner's rep on the Albany Fire Station and Police Station project, so he's been through this recently, and Forrest is a great resource for us, the proposal then extends the contract for an additional year and is for not exceed amounts of $56,000 for construction inspection and $129,000 for owner's rep services on the fire station project, a total of $185,000, he's already in the budget, you saw them at the last budget meeting, and portions of these services are budgeted under each of the different funds that they come out of, so.
And I would just mention, I just, just caught this, missed it when I was reviewing earlier, page 55 and 56, this repeat from the ADS contract.
I wondered about that.
Exhibit A amendment four is the correct for David Evans.
We don't, we can't see that in front of us, so I'm assuming that the motion is still valid.
It is, it's just what was in the packet.
In the packet.
Okay, alright, okay.
Extra page got in.
I move for approval of an authorization for the city manager to sign amendment four to David Evans and Associates' contract for professional services.
Thanks Scott, second please.
Second.
Motion from the other Scott, and then second from the first Scott. Any questions? Go ahead and vote please. Motion carried, thank you. Jacobs CH2M Hill contract amendment.
Alright, this is the last contract amendment we've got for you tonight, so this is again our annual request to extend our contract amendment for on-call engineering services with Jacobs or CH2M, which is still the name on the contract, so this, we did this in two pieces, so amendment 13 is just the additional year not to exceed amount of $100,000, amendment 14 includes a separate not to exceed amount of $39,715 for services performed and update to our water management and conservation plan, I mean, we've talked about this in a couple of previous meetings, I believe, and it is in the budget, this is a, a required document that we have to update regularly and we're due, and it's, it's a fair bit of effort to do that, so, they did the original one, they helped with the update, so they've got the background and information already to get started on this, so, we have, these costs are included in the budget like I mentioned, and there's a suggested motion if you're willing to move forward with it.
Janelle, can you refresh our memory on the types of projects CM2H, CH2M Hill are doing for us on an ongoing basis?
Yes, so, a variety of, variety types of projects, they have supported our road maintenance project that we've had over the last several years for crack sealing, story sealing, actually I believe, I don't, this year I don't think we're going to need their support on those very much, but they helped us get that, which was up and going as we were developing that maintenance program, our sewer lift stations, they've done, they did the designs on them in the past, and with the Morning Star sewer lift station repair that we're working on, and actually, haven't given you an update recently on that, but the contractor is looking at August for the timeframe to do that, which is honestly probably the best time of year to do it, so we're working through that there, they've been supporting us with design of the sticks, and then miscellaneous items that come up, they've been supporting the city industrial property for kind of master planning, planning out what water system we need in there, providing GIS figures for our, yeah, for the road and for the utilities, and helping, provide those resources that we don't have here as far as people who can put those figures together and help us out where to do it.
Make sure.
And it's other things as well, but.
Parking lot, Green Park, Catherine Avenue, all of those.
Oh, our wetlands, nation also.
Move to approve, approval and authorization of the city manager to sign amendment 13 and 14, CH2M Hill contract for professional services.
Second.
Not seeing counsel, please.
I said the second, Jim, you're, you're breaking up on us.
Yeah, agree.
Think it's bandwidth. May try shutting your, I think it may be bandwidth issue. Try your camera, might want to try your camera.
Still not, can't hear you, Mayor. Got a lot of technology.
We're sucking all the bandwidth in Millersburg.
It sounds like it.
Yes.
Yeah, Mary, just need to mute your. Speakers on your computer now.
I am, I am muted, I am muted, this is getting a little old, the third meeting in a row, I get two thirds of the way through and all of a sudden you can't hear me. Let's get back to open meetings here very shortly. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so on the Jacobs contract amendment, did we get Scott's vote, and I'm assuming we have this carried, right?
We show three, yes. There we go.
Okay, thank you, motion carried. Okay. Transportation systems development charges.
Right. So this one, there's a little bit of information in here, I'll try to go through it, if you have questions, feel free to stop me along the way, so, back in July, we adopted revisions to SDC for water, sewer, transportation and stormwater, and the transportation SDC amount per equivalent bowling unit increased, increased from 3,542 to 6,446 per trip, and those are slightly different numbers, but it's measurements, it's about that much per household, so in recent months, there's been interest from several different commercial developers, and we've seen as the cost of the transportation SDC could be a significant hindrance to certain types of commercial development in the city, and we wanted to bring this back to your attention and see how you'd like to handle that, if at all, one thing we could do is look at the land use categories in the adopted SDC resolution, there, we adopted a whole long list of categories, and many of them probably aren't the right fit for Millersburg, and it may make more sense to kind of combine some uses into some more broad categories, so, what you saw in your packet, and I can pull up here on the screen if you'd like, is proposed revision to that table to modify the use of a little bit, and then additionally, we took another look at the amount, the 6,446, and in the process of doing our parks SDC, our consultant, Deb, pulled the new employment figures, because that figures into the parks SDC, and found that they have actually changed from the time of the transportation SDC was adopted, and if we were to use the current employment figures and do this now, it actually shows a lower employment at the moment than it did back when we did transportation, so the growth in trips is, would be larger, thus reducing the charge per trip, if that makes sense, so, that would actually bring our cost per trip down a little bit, to 5902. Now, there's nothing in what we have already adopted that has to be redone, there's nothing wrong with what we did, what was adopted previously, this is just a way to look at it and say, you know, does that number make sense? And I actually had a conversation with her today, she's working with Lebanon on updating their transportation SDC charge, and they're falling right, right in the, in line with our 640, 6,446 number with their project list, so, we're, we're not, either number is, is completely reasonable for us to use, it was just another way of looking at it if you wanted to consider that, as we looked at this, we looked at what would, what would happen if, would it look like if, if we were to adopt less than the maximum allowed, so, council, you can adopt up to the maximum allowed, but you can't, you can't go over it, but you can adopt less than that if you would like to, so, if you were to adopt 90% of the maximum allowed SDC per our current methodology, don't make any changes to that, the resulting SDC would be $5,800 per trip, so, the table that was in your packet showed both that revision and the, but, land use category, so you could look at those, we want to put all that together in case you wanted to take action on it tonight, but you, again, you, there's nothing requiring us to do this, this isn't like we did something that needs to be corrected, it's just, do you want to make some changes because what we're finding now as we're implementing the transportation SDCs, it may be having some unintended consequences, so, you can, we can talk about this tonight, I actually have a couple other versions of the table that we can work through, or if you would prefer, we can discuss this further at a work session on May 25th that we already have scheduled for the parks SDCs, so.
And there is one, one company that is very anxious to, to see what we do, that would like to potentially, but that's, you know, we don't have to make a decision just for that, but we could have others, I mean, because we're starting to see a lot more interest out here, the one thing that I just wanted to point out on the reasoning that we're suggesting keeping our current EDU, the 6446, and just going to something less than that, because if we go with the other direction, we'd have to go through and re-go through those and go through a process, correct me Janelle if I'm mistaken here, but we'd have to go through a lengthier process to do that, to come up to, to the lower number in, we can go to 90%, and then if we ever saw the need to go to the full maximum, we'd have that capability without having to go through, so, we can adopt the lower without having to go through the additional hearings and stuff, otherwise we'd have to, even though we have the numbers, we have additional delay in going through and having to go through the process to adopt that new lower number at 5902, so we can accomplish the same thing, or even a little bit lower by just saying we want to modify it and go to a percentage.
Can I ask a question? I'm concerned that businesses that might crop up on Old Salem Road will in fact impact traffic significantly, you know, the corner intersection there at City Hall is already, we're already talking about a signal going in there at some point down the road, a store of some sort there could dramatically impact transportation issues on that intersection, if you move down towards Love, you know, along the there is going to create transportation or traffic havoc coming in and out of storefronts, whatever, trouble is, that's county road, and the SDCs are city SDCs, so how do you, how do you transition this thought process where you got, you're going to have an impact on traffic, but that impact is on a county road that we don't pay for, we could end up paying for outright traffic life, for example, but, any discussion around that, because my, my concern is, I don't want to minimize the cost impact of these businesses coming in on Old Salem Road in terms of traffic contribution.
So with, with the one business who was, who was interested and who's looking in that, they're actually looking in that area, we worked with this with the county, and because it's a county road, our SDCs don't apply to it, is where we end up, but, you know, we're talking with the county about those things, there, there are requirements that could and to some degree would be put on a project to mitigate issues immediately.
Yeah, and we could have a cost share, so for an example, at, let's say right here at Conser, it's county, we could have a cost share for our portion based on trips off of Conser on there, so you could, could do that, and we were looking at that, but, you know, what we're looking at is, we're talking some pretty significant SDCs, and there was two, one is since withdrawn, but their SDCs, we could have been probably looking at the types of operations that they were looking at, it was a multi, number of potential uses, there is, their transportation SDCs probably would have been well over a million dollars, closer to a million and a half in just transportation SDCs.
That's the one in the corner though, right?
No, that was it, well, which corner is it?
That's which corner you're talking about.
Down by, by Morning Star.
Yes, the one up by Morning Star, potentially if you added up all the, the use of, as separate items, that would have.
Yeah, but the, but the impact on traffic there could have been horrendous, so.
I, I don't know that to that degree, I mean, it's a balancing, it's really a balancing act for the, for the council. I mean, it's a balancing, it's really a balancing act for the, for the council. And that's why we're bringing it forward is because we have heard, you know, I think fairly clear from citizens, they'd like to see more opportunities out here for commerce areas. And our concern when we looked at some of these that are considering, it's significant. And in some cases, higher than potentially what they would be paying in Portland.
In Portland.
And I don't know, we want that reputation as a city. But that's really a council.
I need to be quiet for a while. That other council member speak. Input from others? John, Scott, Scott?
I got a question. Is it possible to, depending, depending on the applicant, adjust as needed?
No.
So it's, it's not something that can be negotiated, if that's what you mean. But they can, there, it really comes down to the trip, the, the trip rate, adjusted trip rate. So for, if you see these ITE codes, this comes out of a manual. And there's an established total M trip rate, peak rate. And then you have some adjustment factors. Now, we can, we can modify the adjustment factors per category, if, if that makes more sense. And these adjustment factors are for pass by. So I'll try to find one here, for example. A shopping center slash retail has a 34% pass by rate. So they're reducing their number by, actually we're, full trip adjustment factor by 40%. Basically saying, you're not coming there just to do one thing, or you're not making a trip there just for, every trip there isn't dedicated just to go to there. They're either going somewhere else and they're diverting to that business, or they're going to multiple places within that. So these, we have to be consistent between categories and how we apply it. But there is some room for discretion for each community by determining what is our pass by factor, what's appropriate for Millersburg versus, I was looking at Troutvale, you know, they may have a different pass by factor, but they've determined it right for their community for different uses. So that's, that's one thing. And then if a project would be required to construct a project or an improvement that is included in our SDC project list, then they could get SDC credits against that. For example, if we were going to, one of the projects in our, actually upcoming parks SDC list is multi-use path along Conser. That's outside of Conser. If we had a big industrial development that came in and was going to develop top of Conser, their parks SDC could be credited for the amount of work that they do to construct that path, because that's a SDC eligible project. You, you have to have, the projects have to be in the list in order to be able to do that, though. Does that help?
No, a little bit. I, yeah, I mean, yeah, it does. I also heard Kevin say quickly, no, we can't adjust. So I just know, you know, like, we, we've done some adjustments with other stuff in the past, but.
Yeah, we can't come, if it's something that's already adjusted, but we can't come in and say, okay, we like this project, so we're going to adjust. Let's say that tractor supply store. So let's say, so that's up there. So that could be tractor supply and let's say coastal farm. Let's say both of them are coming in and you really want to see coastal farm come in and you say, well, we're going to adjust it. We couldn't do that. We can't give preference. We'd have to go with what's on, what's been, what's in there, within that adjustment.
But what we can do, and we've looked at doing this as far as, yeah, for one thing, you can take, if you have a use that's not in here listed specifically, we could say, okay, tell us your trip count, and we can verify that and say, okay, this makes sense, and we'll just charge you based on the trip rate. We can go back to the table, the ITE codes and, and all other ones that we're not specifically using in our list, but changing this list helps us. You know, one thing we can do is, for example.
We can, we can narrow some of the retail uses, for an example.
Right. So, so if we have a store that is part supermarket, but also selling other items as well, we can split that SDC between the uses within that facility. So you've got 2,000 square feet dedicated to a supermarket and 4,000 square feet dedicated to hardware. We can, we can look at it that way.
Okay.
What we, what we can't come, what we can't do is if we had two similar uses, we can't come in and say, well, we'd really like to see this one, we're not this one, and then apply the rate differently in that case.
Here's another example, maybe this nursery garden center. This is really large. They're at 44,000 per thousand square feet versus where.
So if you were to look like a Home Depot or.
Home Depot is what I'm looking for. Building materials and lumber store, they're 13,000. You know, does, does that make sense? A nursery would be charged three times plus the amount of a Home Depot, when a Home Depot has a nursery built into it? And there's category to stand alone.
Janelle, I don't have my entire packet in front of me. It didn't print it out, but what are you asking us tonight? What do you, what do you seek from us to do?
Right. So we are asking if you are comfortable with this, you could go ahead and approve the resolution that would modify the fee schedule. That would be, and I just went away from it, but the, what was provided in your packet, not the fee schedule, but the other one. Just a second.
Okay, so this as modified reflects your best effort in terms of what you feel it should be, these, these rates should be at this stage.
Well, like Kevin mentioned, it's, it's, whether it should be, it means a policy decision. The, the table that was proposed has the 90% of the maximum shown in it, and that's what I've got up on the screen here. If you wanted to stick with the full amount, which is completely fine, if you feel more comfortable just staying with that. I've got another version of it here, which just reduces the category. So we can move forward with this now, or if you feel like you need further discussion or further time to think about it, we can talk about it at the work session on the 25th.
So Jim, can I have a, can I have a stab at this really quick here?
Yeah.
Yeah, Janelle and I had a conver- conversation about this, I believe it was on Monday. But anyways, yesterday or it's Friday, I don't know, one of, one of the other days, they start, you know, going in one after the other here.
Monday.
So my, my first thoughts are is, is first of all, I, I can concur with you. And that is that, to me, roads are costing more and, and more. I mean, it's, it's amazing how when we're looking at putting in roads or, or turn lanes now, seems like a million dollars doesn't, doesn't, doesn't go far. And the one big thing that I look at is I don't want to get behind the curve. Luckily, we aren't as a city. I feel like some of the cities and most of them that I hear of are, are behind the curve as far as funding, you know, especially on their, on their roads. That being said, also is costs are increasing significantly. Seems like every, every year they go up quite a bit. So as far as lowering the SDC, I don't really see doing that because I could pull the table whenever they publish it after, after this, and the fee will be different from, from when we first, first did it. So that's, that's, that, that's a constantly changing, changing target. And so I say that we leave it along at the, at the 6,400. That being said, I think changing some of these categories absolutely makes, makes sense. And in all honesty, that solves most of these people's problems, I think, coming into the city. Because some of these, it was just a category issue. You know, I, I can solve a lot easier for them. You know, if they're being charged, let's say 40,000 per thousand gross square feet versus now I'm charging them 10, because the category fits them, fits them better. That's a lot bigger change to them than if I go from 6,400 to 5,000, 5,800. So I say we don't, we don't change that. That being said, looking at this table, I think this table's a lot better than what we, what, what we had. But there's still a couple line items on here that I'm not liking. The big ones are to me that I see, and I think this is just from, it's kind of old data kind of stuff, you know, data that they brought in. Was like the health and fitness club is charged 20,010 per thousand gross square feet. Obviously, I could look down here and there's not a whole lot that gets up there as far as that charge. So that's like one of the highest, not the highest, but up there for sure. You go down here to the bank, there's the walk-in bank and the drive-in bank. I mean, a drive-in bank is charged 51,002. That's basically like a truck, truck stop charge. I don't know about everybody else, but I don't remember the last time that I went to my bank. You know, so actually I have because I own a business, but beyond that, for personal reasons, I'm not, I'm not sure the last reason that I went in there. And they're just not really seeing the traffic that they used to. Those, and then the, so the walk-in, the drive-in bank, and then the specialty contractor line item. I'm scrolling up here to it too. The specialty contractor, I believe, is close to 20,000 per thousand gross square feet. And that one kind of poor conversation came up, that would be like a Pacific Power. That one might have caught my eye because that's where my, my business would fall under. And it's not so much, I'm not moving there, but it's really brought that one up because even Pacific Power, you have people coming in the morning, they get in their trucks and they leave. There's a lot of warehouse, warehouse space that comes along with those businesses that would be charged that. So as far as, you know, looking at some of these other line, or these, these other line items, it really doesn't make sense that they're charged that, that much. Now, if we broke them out to specialty trade contractor for their office only, and then warehousing for the rest of it, that, that'd make a lot more sense, or just do office and then warehouse. So my suggestion would be leave the SDC where it, where it is. Personally, I would just strike those line items. I would, I would strike the two banking ones. I would throw them under an office. Because I think that's more what they are now. I would strike the specialty trade contractor, and that would then fall under office slash warehousing, which I think is a, is a better fit. And the same thing with the, the health, health, health and fitness clubs, I would strike that also. I think that should run under something more along a retail. And that'd be, that's what I'd do. I think, I think this looks great, and this solves a lot of those issues coming in.
Are we adequately covered if we get a hospital and related businesses in a common area?
Yeah, that's under clinic, and there's another one there. Clinic and hospital, hospital, hos- the hospital's actually on there. And that's the one that actually caught, caught my eye, Jim, because that one's 5,626 dollars per thousand gross square feet. So if you run that per my specialty contractor or my health, health club, four times more. That's, 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 that's a lot. So.
Okay, so thanks, Scott. You did your homework. So if, question to staff and council, if Janelle and Scott can find tune this the way they have done thus far, including the input tonight, does this get us there? Hello?
I would support it.
We didn't talk about striking those. I mean, does that, does that work for you? That was how our conversation kind of, to me, was leading, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure if you thought that was, that was a good fit too. I, I, I think it'd be, but.
I, I don't think there is an, I don't think there would be an issue with it. If we took a look at Albany's, and Albany's is even, I mean, it's pared down even, I think they've got like, in categories as all.
Yeah, they're, they're really bare bones in their list. So if, if you wanted to make these changes, I've highlighted them, I can make them right here, and you can adopt with the changes that have been discussed tonight. I've already, I've modified the resolution also that would work if you didn't want to change the amount. Or we can bring it back to you, Queen, at a separate meeting, but the end result would be the same.
Well, if we can, let's get it done. Also, are you okay with the changes that Scott proposed? And modifying, leaving, having this being the updated document for approval?
This is Callan, I, I, I might be the only one, but I, it's something I'd probably want to look at, at the work session. I just see some other, there's some other stuff, like the medical dental office, you know, if that's, I mean, that's a big chunk too. And we were talking about clinic, but it's just a lot of different movement of numbers that sort of, I do appreciate McPhee's, Council McPhee, your, your take on it. I'd probably lean towards what you're seeing. You seem to be a, well, you know, diversified in this. But just a lot of numbers, sort of got to grasp it, but that's just where my head is.
Yeah, the one thing to keep in mind with your, like a dental office and stuff, those are usually, aren't large structures. So keep that in mind as far as you look at impacts. You know, most dental offices, you know, you maybe 3,000 square feet. But it is also something that if we saw was an issue coming, you know, we can always come back and further modify as well.
Yeah, I just, yeah, if you, yeah, that makes sense. I guess that's where you go to the hospital. It's being at, you know, 50, 5,600 change, you know, obviously large structure there. I mean, you're talking huge. Yeah, clinic's a little less. I'd, yeah, I just, I just don't want to keep coming back, but I guess, I mean, we can. It just, I, it does make sense what, what was said about trying to make the modifications that were highlighted.
Dental offices, and so when you look at a, a medical dental office, there's a lot, you know, when you stop and think, you know, they're seeing five, 10 people and now, you know, for the size, there's a lot of people coming in and out usually, but.
For sure. If we hold off and review it during the work session, we typically do not make most, approve items there that we hold over at the next council meeting. So put us a month out for final approval. So what I heard Kevin say, I believe, Scott, was that we can come back and modify it again later if we see something we've missed.
Yeah. Scott, so Scott, you looked at this pretty close?
I mean, as close as I could. I, I actually had the same, same question you did with the medical dental office. And Janelle and I talked through that, and then it kind of made sense, kind of what, what Kevin just, just said, because that one, that one stood out to me too. Same with, the same with the clinic. Yeah, looking at it, I, I mean, maybe something as well, like, like we said, as we move forward, we may have something else come up. I mean, really, you know, business changes. You know, I mean, look at us, look at us now buying Amazon, you know, way more having, having stuff delivered to our house, you know, the retail landscape changes, you know, banking's changed. You know, so it used to be you went to the bank for everything. Now you, now you don't. Some charge you a fee to go there. You know, so, you know, so I think it's kind of a work in progress, but the big thing is, you know, is, is, is just get it pared, pared down as much as we can. And to just make it make sense for businesses moving ahead. And so they're not being charged a crazy amount of money, which is some of those that I, that I heard, I, I thought was, you know, quite a bit. So.
Right.
You know, as, as far as charging as much as like Portland does, that, that one doesn't worry me. I mean, I, I don't want to charge as much as they do. But to me, when I, when I'm building a project, I don't look at one SDC charge. I look at the whole, the whole project cost. You know, so, and then, and then what's my cost going, going to be to, to carry that later? Some of those property taxes, you know, every, you know, water rates, et cetera, et cetera. So that one doesn't concern, concern me too much, just to, just to throw that out there.
Okay. They, that fast food, did that, is that a concern? I mean, this small square footage, 51,000?
That was, that was another one that I brought up. Yeah, but your problem is there is people have to, have to go there to get the food. So it's either Uber Eats go there, or you go there, or somebody has to go there. Yeah, so.
That has pretty good impact.
And, and with Albany's few categories, they did keep that one, and theirs is higher than ours, actually.
Yeah, because I said, yeah, I brought, I brought that one up too.
This is new grounds for me. I'll, I'll lean, I, I mean, what I'm hearing seems to me with just what we just covered tonight, I seem, I feel comfortable with. And would be willing to move forward if, if the consensus of council on that, so.
Thanks, Scott. Janelle, do you have the motion modified up there for us?
I will in just a moment. Hang on, let me change the words, and I will put it right back up.
And you made the changes that you and Scott have talked about?
I did. And let me pull up the new resolution because I have that ready, because it changed the words a little bit on that too.
As modified.
During the council meeting?
Going back to the banks, what, how did we categorize that? Did it? Did we combine that to something?
So it would look at a similar use, so I forget what they were, but I think it would just fall under. So it would look at a similar use, so I, I forget what they were, but I think it would just fall under an, an office. If I remember right, let me.
I think that's what Scott said, yeah.
I mean, that's just mine.
It would be under general office.
Yeah.
Okay, let me pull this over. So this is the amendment that does not change the amount of the SDC per trip, it just adopts the new table. And then the table we had this one with the changes that were just discussed. I think we've got everything documented here that you would want to see, that you would need, you know, for making this motion. If that's what you want to do, and I guess Forrest can jump in if, if he sees anything procedurally concerning about what, about how we're doing.
I just, I don't see any changes on the screen. All I see is talking about the transportation SDCs.
You see this, Forrest?
No, I don't. I just see your one transportation SDC proposed.
Are you seeing the?
Okay.
In the resolution?
Uh, I just see, no, I don't. I see proposal for consideration.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it either. No, there's no.
Let me try sharing this happening and starting my share again.
Okay, there we go.
There you go. Okay.
So there's the revised resolution to take out the change to the amount of the SDC and just say, we're providing the fee schedule.
Can you make that larger?
Larger?
Scott's verbal again.
I, I think the mayor and Scott are on the same internet provider, and they're just moving back and forth between you who's got more bandwidth.
We're gonna talk about this on the.
I'm seeing what you have on here, Janelle, and it looks fine to me. The modifications, it looks very good.
And then we have the, sorry, the table. Has everybody seen the table with the changes?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, we can see that.
Yellow highlights the one.
Saw those as you did them.
And now are you seeing the motion?
Yes.
All right.
A motion.
Yes, that's, that's fine.
No motion?
I move for adoption of Resolution 2021-08, modifying the fee schedule for transportation systems development charges as modified during the council meeting.
Second.
This is Scott McPhee, second from John. Thank you both. Any further clarifying questions or concerns? Please. Thank you. All right. Other item, supplemental budget?
Yes, so we need to adopt a resolution for supplemental budget expenditure. So approval of Resolution 202119, adopting expenditures in fiscal year 2021. So at the August 13th, 2019 council meeting, council adopted Resolution 20-19-18, declaring necessity for acquisition of property for use of the public park. We did not budget all the funds which may have been anticipated for acquiring the land for the park, which required, is now requiring us to do a budget appropriation to authorize the expenditure of those additional funds. So in addition to address the funds required to complete the purchase of property, resolution also includes an increase our general fund for legal services for costs associated with acquisition of the park property and costs associated with the potential lease of industrial zone property. So the resolution is above you, so that we do have sufficient funds available from parks SDC and general fund contingency. The proposed 21, 22 budget that we just shared with you, hook that into account, the spending of that in the associated, that's associated with the resolution before you tonight. Any questions on that? So you'll notice on, on the line item here, it shows that we are. So we're showing a decrease in operating contingency of 141,000, spending down parks S, SDCs, another 359, so 359 would go to the park. Property acquisition, 41,000 of our contingency would go to the land, and then 100,000 to our legal services line item.
Do you bring the motion back up, please? Any comments from council, questions?
We're adopting Resolution 21-09, middle budget for fiscal year 2020-22.
Okay.
Motion from Scott Cowan, second from Scott McPhee. Any questions or concerns? Please vote. Looking one, there we go, motion carried. Thank you. Any closing, that's it for new business, right, Kevin and Janelle? Is there anything else that I had missed?
Yep, that is.
Thank you. Closing public comment. I believe we still have one person to public on there. You're welcome to speak to us if you'd like, if you'd like to hear from him. Okay, closing council comment. Kevin Janelle. The governor is indicating that she's planning on opening everything up, I believe July 1, assuming that we get 70% of everybody vaccinated with at least one vaccine. If that should happen, can we have our July meeting in the office?
I would, I would hope so, but she put a caveat in there that's disconcerting, because she stated that there may still be distancing requirements and face masks. So the biggest question for us is if she requires us to still maintain six feet spacing, that's where our limiting, the six feet is what limits us, and the face masks. So if we're still required to wear face masks indoors and things, I mean, we can do it, you're just gonna be on screen and masks. So that would be. And that's what, I'm hopeful that they don't. But that's what, that caveat, she said they're gonna completely reopen things, but I'm not sure how they are to keep in distancing, you know. That's her definition of completely reopening, and mine are probably two different definitions, but I would say, you know, if it's where we can get adequate numbers in there, and, and if you have to wear masks, you're comfortable with that, then I would say yes.
Comments or concerns from council on this topic? Okay. All right, anything else from council? John?
Let's open up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay, any, any other closing council comment?
Yeah, I've got a. I've got a question, Jim. So, and I should have probably asked this offline, but I'll ask it now, doesn't really, it's not, not a big deal. It's been great to see the amount of, first of all, JBO players out there, baseball players playing at the park. It's been amazing seeing, seeing, seeing that many kids out together, wearing their masks and social distance, obviously, all of those things, but. Question I had was as far as cleaning of the bathrooms, how often do our bathrooms out there get, get cleaned now?
Oh, Janelle answered. I know, but she's.
So on a week, well, weekdays and weekends, they're getting cleaned twice a day. Well, once a day on the weekends, twice a day during the week. And I heard there was a little bit of an incident with soap missing the past weekend. We've had an issue with people stealing the soap dispensers, and this is not new. So we've been putting in hand soap containers, but it sounds like those were all removed again. So we did just get new soap dispensers ordered. We have to go with a different style to get the ones we've had. But I guess, to answer your question on cleaning, at least once a day. Yeah. Is that what you were looking?
Yeah, no, I was just, I was asking that, because I was, I was out there on Saturday, I think it was like 10:00 AM, and, and the bathrooms were, it was, it was nasty. So that's why I was, that's why I was asking that, so. Obviously, I'm, I'm assuming somebody's checking up on that bathroom cleaning if it's happening that often. I was, I was expecting to hear it once or twice a week, but.
No, at, at least once a day, and we have someone coming in on the weekends to do that. He's our seasonal maintenance worker who's about to start for the summer as well, but he's been doing every day, every weekend day for the last, I don't know, year.
We, we normally during the winter had closed them at times, I believe. Weren't we locking them?
Only for nighttime hours.
So. I'm not sure what people, you wouldn't think there'd be a high market for, I think most of it's just vandalism, because you wouldn't think there'd be a high market for, you know, our soap dispensers that are mounted on the wall, that they appear regularly in there.
And I will double check with them, but I, I know he's been out every day. He usually goes early in the morning, I believe, because he does other, I think he has another job right now. So by 10 o'clock in the morning, you would think he'd be in good shape in the morning, but if one person came in and made mess, tracked it, which happens.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I mean, this was, this is beyond a one person, this was.
There is a log on the door, so there's a log that they fill out each day.
Okay.
On each door in the.
Just out of curiosity, during the, during the summer, because the parks closed, right, during the evenings, I mean, it closes at what, 9, I think? Is there a reason we don't, we don't lock those, or what's your?
They're on a timer, they're on a timer, and they do lock.
They do lock during the evenings, then, okay, perfect, okay.
I couldn't tell you right now exactly what time that lock is on and entrance off in the morning, but I can find out.
There's an emergency release, so people can get out if they, they lock them down, but we have had calls a couple times from people that didn't realize, didn't see the signs in there for emergency release of the door if it locks while they're in there.
Okay, perfect, all right. No, that answers my questions, thank you.
Other comments, votes and comments? Council, staff, anybody? Going once? Okay, we're going to adjourn at 14. Thank you.
Mayor, do you have just a minute?
Sure.
You guys have a good night.
Yeah, we'll call you back, Mayor.